Twenty-second anniversary of nine eleven. If you notice on the way in tonight, we have the Woodcrafters, Lewis and Juan, created and donated a nine eleven memorial art piece at Village Hall. It's lit up out there. I encourage you to take a look at it when you have a moment, but also would like to thank our Montgomery Police Department, our five fire districts that serve and protect this village 24/7, 365 days. Many of the police department are here tonight. So I did call the meeting to order. Would like to have a moment of silence before the pledge this evening. Thank you. All right, if I can have you rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Debbie, call the roll.
Trusty Guyer.
Here.
Trusty Spurling.
Here.
Trusty Bowman. Trusty Youngerman.
Here.
Trusty Marasek.
Here.
Trusty Betzinger.
Here. All right, we do have a quorum this evening. Moving into the second item for public participation is a presentation of a membership certificate from our Greater Montgomery Area Chamber of Commerce. I know we have Jeff and lots of members, so please come on down, introduce yourself, and welcome.
Come on, guys, don't be shy. All right, good evening. As you said, my name is Jeff Coy Rossi. I am lucky enough to be the president of the Greater Montgomery Area Chamber of Commerce. I've got a few of our directors here tonight. Go ahead, I'm gonna let you guys introduce yourself.
Cindy Furchin.
Loretta Rosola.
Debbie Albright.
Tom Haselwitz.
Yes, I do that because like me, they love to talk, so. But good evening. So on behalf of the Greater Montgomery Area Chamber of Commerce, I and my fellow directors would like to express our appreciation of the, I'm sorry, excuse me, of the village's continued membership. The chamber's mission to connect and support businesses in the Montgomery area could not be accomplished without the support of its membership. Over the past couple of years, we've reinvented ourselves, developed new and improved marketing networking opportunities, and grown our membership over twofold. A big piece of that accomplishment is because of the support and partnership of our advocate level member, the Village of Montgomery. So tonight, we would like to present the Village of Montgomery with this renewal certificate and express our sincere appreciation for your continued support. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We should get a picture.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Someone told me recently that there's something cool about the campaign. There's like renewed vibe and energy, which is exactly what you just talked about, so we're pretty excited about it. Also, we have a shared success. Your success is really the capital. It's a true partnership.
All right. I'm gonna respond to your question here, too.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're perfect.
Thank you.
Can you hear us?
Please make sure somebody talks through the phone.
All right.
Moving on to the, and thank you, moving on to item C this evening is a recognition of Anthony Hess from Team USA. So we love the opportunity to acknowledge residents who are doing exceptional things in the world, and Anthony Hess is really no, a perfect example of that. He just recently participated internationally with the International School Sport Federation, the ISF, swimming championships just down the street in Brazil, in Rio. He represented Team USA competing in all four strokes, and I lost my list here because they're, there we go, and then various field trips we were just speaking with before the meeting. Anthony placed 10th in the 200-yard breaststroke. He was also in the 100-yard butterfly, and he swam his best time ever, ranking 24th. He swam the 100 breaststroke, I said butterfly first, right? 100 breaststroke, again, a personal record, earning him 10th place, and his final stroke, 100 backstroke, personal best, securing 24th. So this is pretty significant. I appreciate his mom reaching out to us and letting us know. This is the exact, perfect example of when we need to highlight our own who are doing exceptional things in the world. So with that, and I mean the world in this one, if you can come down, we do have a certificate and then a challenge point for you as well, but thank you.
So I would like to give this certificate of appreciation. This certificate is presented to Anthony Hess, representing the Village of Montgomery, and Team USA, and the International School Sport Federation, U-15 Swimming Championships, without any grateful for your achievement and success. And one round of applause.
I swam at the Civic Center when I was a kid, very long time ago, and I was nowhere close to those times, but I had fun doing it, so. Thanks for coming. You don't have to stick around for the whole meeting, we won't be offended. Okay, so moving on to the next item for separate action, we have swearing ins now? Okay, so turn over to the chief, we have two new police officers to swear in this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my honor tonight to introduce you a couple of our newest police officers, but I do want to acknowledge the fact of all their brothers and sisters standing in the back of the room. We always have family support that's outpouring for every one of our officer in apartment. Thank you for coming, guys, that's outstanding. So first night, I'm gonna introduce you to Adrian Yurioshtegi.
Correct.
Good, come on down, Adrian. Adrian came from Morton High School out of Cicero where he grew up. After that, he went to Western Illinois University, go Leathernecks, where he received his bachelor's degree in criminal justice, and I understand he also took Spanish?
Yes, Spanish and Latin.
Did you get an A?
Close.
Okay. After that, he was actually hired by the Chicago Police Department, where he did four years, transferred over to Cicero for a couple of years, and now he decided that it's time to come out to the burbs and land with us. Tonight, he is here with his wife Yasmin, his mom Maria, sister Sylvia, and Myra. Ladies and gentlemen, Adrian Yurioshtegi.
All right, if you can raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of police officer.
The duties of police officer.
To the best of my ability. All right, if you can raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Brandon Ritter.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of police officer.
The duties of police officer.
To the best of my ability. All right, thank you. Moving on to the next item for public participation, we have item F, proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Month. I'll read the proclamation, and then, unless you wanted to read it, were you here to read it? Okay, I'll read it, and then I'll invite, I'll invite you to come up to speak. All right, so the proclamation is for the National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, September of 2023. That was a dog, right? Just paused for a second, so. All right, whereas, September is recognized as the National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and is intended to promote awareness surrounding suicide prevention resources. The simple goal is to start the conversation and de-stigmatize it and help connect people with the appropriate support services. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the second leading cause of death among individuals between the age of 10 to 34, with more than 48,000 people dying by suicide annually in the United States. Whereas the Village of Montgomery is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to participate or to publicly place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, PAC leaders, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our community in simply being available to one another. Whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. Now therefore, as Village President of Montgomery, I do hereby designate the month of September of 2023 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and I urge all residents to take the time to understand mental health through education and recognize that we need to take care of one another and that a simple phone call or message can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. And as I said that, all of you thought of somebody? Call them tonight or tomorrow, because that will go a long way. With that, I would entertain a motion for approval. Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? All right, ayes have it. So welcome, come on up. Yeah, did you want to say a few words, too? And we'll take a picture? So you want to talk, and then we'll do a photo after.
All right, I just wanted to say thank you for the proclamation. I would like to take this time here just as a quick reminder to let everyone know that there are many resources available to individuals personally struggling with suicidal thoughts or those with friends or family who are having a difficult time. We have provided wallet cards this evening for those present and have additional available in the lobby at Village Hall and at the police department. And just a few noteworthy resources, we have 988. You could dial 988 from any phone and be connected to the Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. You can also text that number, 988, and you can get more information on 988 at 988lifeline.org. I also want to highlight Suicide Prevention Services located at 528 South Batavia Avenue in Batavia. They are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit whose mission is suicide prevention and awareness as well. Thank you to the Village of Montgomery Board for allowing time to bring light to the importance of suicide prevention and awareness.
Thanks, Erica. All right, second to lastly, item G is our BINA hearing. Who would like to give the intro on that? All right, Jarka Miluski, how are you? Go ahead.
All right, so this is just an opportunity for the general public to make comment on the issuance of debt that was published in the Kendall County Record a couple of weeks back. So just as a reminder, this is an issuance of approximately $17 million, not to exceed that amount. It's 13.5 million of new money, which is split with TIF II and the water fund, and we're looking at 3.5 in refunding issuances. So are there any comments? I can take any questions anyone has.
No, so is it a public hearing?
It is.
Okay, so we'll open the BINA public hearing.
And, yep.
And then if there's any member of the public that wishes to address the board on this topic, now would be your time. You see anybody online, or did anybody write comments ahead of time? Okay. All right, hearing done, I'll close the public hearing and move into item H. Lastly, public comment, two-minute opportunity. Is there any member of the public that's here that would like to make public comment this evening that's not on the agenda elsewhere? Okay, so step up, if you could just say your name and address, and welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Drake Cody. I'm a senior at Bennett Academy. I live in Naperville, and I'd like to start off by thanking you all for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here tonight to raise awareness about an issue that is very important to me, that being equal pay for workers with disabilities. What if I told you that it's perfectly legal for a business to pay individuals with disabilities a lower wage for completing the same amount of work? I'd like to introduce you a law that was a part of the New Deal from 84 years ago and still exists today in the majority of our country. Known as 14C, this law allows for companies to pay workers with disabilities subminimum wage, in some cases as little as $2 an hour, and it's completely legal. 14C was originally designed to support people with disabilities in the workforce, but it has since become a mechanism to suppress their growth while providing cheap labor for businesses. Additionally, 14C is fraught with abuse. In fact, the Department of Labor handed out the largest fine to an establishment with the 14C certificate to a group here in Illinois. In October of 2022, the Department of Labor reported that Illinois ranks second in the nation in the number of 14C certificates currently issued or pending. At our state level in 2021, Governor Pritzker signed a bill that eliminated all state contractors from using 14C, and a few representatives here in Illinois are also currently drafting legislation to completely eliminate 14C. My goal here tonight is to raise awareness of this issue at the local level and encourage this body to research it more and determine if it's appropriate for businesses in this town to be afforded this opportunity. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now. If not, I've left my information on the sheet here, but if not, I'd like to thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Drake, appreciate it. That was awesome. Thanks for coming. All right, any other comments this evening? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda, I'll read the items, and then entertain a motion. Minutes of the August 28th Village Board Meeting, executive session minutes for August 28th, executive session minutes for September 5th, accounts payable through September 11th, accounts receivable for August, and the water production report for August. It's all moved. Second. Moving second, any discussion? Call the roll.
Trusty Spurling, yes. Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
Trusty Marasek.
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger.
Yes.
Trusty Guyer.
Yes.
And that carries, five to zero, thank you. Moving into items for separate action, the first one is a recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, PZC 2023-011, special use amendment, utility scale solar energy system at Fox Metro Water Reclamation District, 800 South River Street, and welcome to Fox Metro and Director Abt, go ahead and introduce.
Thank you. The petitioner, Fox Metro, is proposing a special use to expand their existing utility scale solar energy system on their site at 800 South River Street. This was originally approved on January 14th, 2019, for their original solar cell array. So the new panels are proposed to be located to the east of the existing field and to the south along the river. There are some trees and brush along the river that will need to be removed in order to allow for adequate sunlight to reach the panels, but a landscape plan has been submitted for review and approval that accounts for replacing some of the trees that need to be removed. Fox Metro and the village engineer, along with staff and Montgomery Fire, did visit the site to gain a better understanding of the access and road conditions, and we included those conditions as from the inspection into the recommendation that staff had for the public hearing. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hold their public hearing on the 7th and voted 6-0 to recommend approval of the special use with several conditions that were in the village's staff report. They however did not include the condition that required a $5,000 nuisance deposit. This is our standard when it comes to using alternative surfaces, and the gravel access drive would be considered an alternative surface, so was part of the original recommendation. The petitioner did oppose having to post that particular nuisance deposit upon further consideration. We have, we would say we are fine with not keeping that $5,000 deposit in there, even though it is standard practice, this is another public agency, so we're willing to afford some grace in that and not require that particular payment and posting of that bond. So, but we do have the positive recommendation from the village board or from the Planning and Zoning Commission to the village board with all those conditions absent the $5,000 nuisance deposit included in the ordinance that's before you tonight for consideration of first reading.
Perfect.
Mm-hmm.
Does the petition have anything additional that you'd like to add?
Just a few things to add.
Yeah.
Greg Inglenunson, I'm the attorney for Fox Metro.
Awesome, welcome.
A couple of things we also brought up as far as there was a condition about dust control, and we thought maybe the best way to do it, because it says it talks about chemicals, and we can't put any chemicals out there because it's already in a site that's got chemicals in there, so if there's something in there, maybe we say as a condition if there's a dust control complaint that we could water, you know, use water to, you know, control any, if there's complaints, because we never had complaints out there for dust, so we thought that was a pretty, pretty good, you know, compromise.
Mm-hmm.
So that was one thing, and the last one was, I didn't bring it up at the other meeting, but there was, because between the two meetings, they had also recommended a snow removal, and so something like this for a fire in winter, we thought this likelihood of having a fire, that you need fire trucks back there is pretty low. So if we took that condition out, we would appreciate that, or maybe something that says over six inches, something that a fire truck wouldn't have a problem getting back there, but with there's that much snow, we can't imagine there'd be a fire out there in that area, but, so that was the other comment we had as far as one of the conditions.
And that's honestly the only question that I had, is snow removal on a gravel drive. I know that's probably a fire condition, but your second suggestion is reasonable in my mind. I don't know what the fire district would say.
I think they're willing to be reasonable, so I think we can come up with a qualifier for having to do that, and we can discuss that with them.
Perfect.
Fair enough.
Sounds perfect. I should say I do appreciate, I appreciate you guys doing a solar field on your property that really just comes back to save me money as a resident.
It does, actually, yeah.
It's much easier to approve than, you know, a developer doing this to make a profit, so I honestly really appreciate that from a taxpayer standpoint, but I do appreciate the relationship that we have with Fox Metro. We are, we are equal governing bodies, you know, that have an equal purpose to our residents, and anything we can do to work together is certainly a benefit. So thanks for coming.
Excellent, we appreciate that.
All right, any questions? Motion to approve the recommendation or to accept the recommendation of Planning and Zoning Commission?
Second.
Roll call, let's do a roll call.
Trusty Marasek.
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger.
Yes.
Trusty Guyer.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
That carries, five to zero. The next item is ordinance 2041, this is granting a special use, this is first reading. Is there any objection to putting this on consent at a future meeting?
With the notes related to the $5,000 and coming up with the.
The $5,000 was, was removed from the recommendation previously, right? And then the other, the other note staff and the petitioner can figure out before. I just, just note back to the board in your cover memo next time, and then I'll talk with Trusty Bowman just to make sure he's comfortable, but otherwise it'll be on consent at our next meeting.
Right, great.
Awesome, thanks for coming. I guess that's just code for you don't have to come to the next meeting unless you. All right, resolution, sorry, item C, resolution 2023-025, authorizing the release of performance security for Harts Park, Director Abt.
Yes, thank you. We have a resolution attached that allows for the release of the performance bond for Harts Park that's over there by the apartment buildings in Marquee Point. EEI and Oswego Land Park District have recommended release of the bond for the improvements. The seating has been established, they completed that inspection, and they have already deeded the property over to the park district, so we feel it's appropriate now to release the remaining part of the performance bond.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Go ahead, Debbie.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
Trusty Marasek.
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
That carries, thank you. Five to zero. All right, item D is resolution 2023-026, authorizing mobile food facility licenses for Gordito Tacos, Director Abt.
Yes, we have another stationary food vendor requesting to locate in the village. This one will be taking over where Primos Tacos had previously been located, at 1460 Douglas Road, so the number of licenses issued remains the same, just a new vendor at that particular location. So just as an update, Primos Tacos has or is in the process of purchasing property at Montgomery and Lafayette, where they're going to be opening up a food, kind of a food truck court there, similar to the Rust Stop. So we are treating that a little bit different than our stationary food vendor, so we are going to be moving forward with them with a temporary use permit for the outdoor market like we did with the Rust Stop that'll go till the end of the year, and then in the meantime, we will be working on a text amendment that will address the requirements for this type of use, so that'll be coming before a public hearing and before this board for a vote in the future, and then for next year. drive would be considered an alternative surface, so was part of the original recommendation. The petitioner did oppose having to post that particular nuisance deposit upon further consideration. We have, we would say we are fine with not keeping that five-thousand-dollar deposit in there, even though it is standard practice, this is another public agency, so we're willing to afford some grace in that and not require that particular payment and posting of that bond, so, but we do have the positive recommendation from the village board or from the Planning and Zoning Commission to the village board with all those conditions, absent the five-thousand-dollar nuisance deposit included in the ordinance that's before you tonight for consideration of first reading.
Perfect.
Mm-hmm.
Does the petitioner have anything additional that you'd like to add?
Just a few things to add.
Yeah.
Greg Ingam-Lundson, I'm the attorney for Fox Metro.
Awesome, welcome.
A couple of things we also brought up as far as there was a condition about dust control, and we thought maybe the best way to do it, because it said it talks about chemicals, and we can't put any chemicals out there because it's already in a site that's got chemicals in there, so if there's something in there, maybe we say as a condition if there's a dust control complaint that we could water, you know, use water to, 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 you know, control any, if there's complaints, because we never had complaints out there for dust, so, and we thought that was a pretty, pretty good, you know, compromise.
Mm-hmm.
So that was one thing, and the last one was, I didn't bring it up at the, at the other meeting, but there was, because between the two meetings, they had also recommended a snow removal, and, and saw something like this for a fire in winter, we thought this likelihood of having a fire, that you need fire trucks back there, is pretty low, so if we took that condition out, we would appreciate that, or maybe something that says over six inches, something that a fire truck wouldn't have a problem getting back there, but when there's that much snow, we can't imagine there'd be a fire out there in, in that area, but, so that was the other comment we had as far as one of the conditions.
And that's honestly the only question that I had, is snow removal on a gravel drive. I know that's probably a fire condition, but your second suggestion is reasonable in my mind. I don't know what the fire district would say.
I think they're willing to be reasonable, so I think we can come up with a qualifier for having to do that, and we can discuss that with them.
Perfect.
Fair enough.
Sounds perfect. I, I should say I do appreciate, I appreciate you guys doing a solar field on your property that really just comes back to save me money as a resident.
It does, actually, yeah.
It's much easier to approve than, you know, a developer doing this to, to make a profit, so I honestly really appreciate that from a taxpayer standpoint, but I do appreciate the relationship that we have with Fox Metro. We are, we are equal governing bodies, you know, that have an equal purpose to our residents, and anything we can do to work together is certainly a benefit, so thanks for coming.
We appreciate that.
All right, any questions?
Motion to approve the recommendation, or to accept the recommendation of Planning and Zoning Commission?
Second.
Roll call? Let's do a roll call.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
That carries five to zero. The next item is ordinance twenty forty-one, this is granting a special use, this is first reading. Is there any objection to putting this on consent at a future meeting?
With the notes related to the five thousand dollars and coming up with the.
The five thousand was, was removed from the recommendation previously, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then the other, the other note staff and, and the petitioner can figure out before. I just, just note back to the board in your cover memo next time, and then I'll talk with Trustee Baumann just to make sure he's comfortable, but otherwise it'll be on consent at our next meeting.
Right, sir.
Awesome, thanks for coming. I guess that's just code for you don't have to come to the next meeting unless.
[laughing].
All right, resolution, sorry, item C, resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero-two-five, authorizing the release of performance security for Harts Park. Director Abt?
Um, yes, thank you. We have a resolution attached that allows for the release of the performance bond for Harts Park that's over there by the apartment buildings in Marquee Point. E E I and Oswego Land Park District have recommended release of the bond for the improvements. The seating has been established, they completed that inspection, and they have already deeded the property over to the park district, so we feel it's appropriate now to release the remaining part of the performance bond.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead, Debbie.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
That carries, thank you. Five to zero. All right, item D is resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero-two-six, authorizing mobile food facility licenses for Gordito Tacos. Director Abt?
Um, yes, we have another stationary food vendor requesting to locate in the village. This one will be taking over where Primos Tacos had previously been located, at fourteen-sixty Douglas Road, so the number of licenses issued remains the same, just a new vendor at that particular location. So just as an update, Primos Tacos has, or is in the process of purchasing property at Montgomery and Lafayette, where they're going to be opening up a food, kind of a food truck court there, similar to the Rust Stop, so we are treating that a little bit different than our stationary food vendor, so we are going to be moving forward with them with a temporary use permit for the outdoor market, like we did with the Rust Stop, that'll go till the end of the year, and then in the meantime, we will be working on a text amendment that will address the requirements for this type of use, so that'll be coming before a public hearing and before this board for a vote in the future, and then for next year they will have to go through that process in order to have that continued food truck use.
Okay, questions?
Oh, I have a couple of comments. So our last petitioner, where we put the latest one off of Montgomery Road, I had questioned this location where Primos was, and now Gordito's? Sorry, I shouldn't have taken off my glasses.
Yeah, Gordito Tacos.
So now where Gordito Tacos wants to go, I'm, I'm not in favor of this because I do feel that we are getting oversaturated, not just with the food trucks in this Douglas Road corridor, but now with those that will serve tacos. They're so close to each other, and then we know this other area where we're going to have multiple food trucks is going to be the other way down Montgomery Road, I mean, that's only a block or so down the road, so I'm, I'm going to be a no on this one as well. I don't think the location is, is going to be, I, I just don't think it's going to be a good location with the other, we know the other ones are coming.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to add, at the last meeting, I had voted yes for that because it was my understanding that Primos had moved, and I didn't think another vendor was going to go in that location, so that's why I voted yes for the last food vendor there on Montgomery Road, but I agree with Trustee Spurling, we're starting to get oversaturated. I'm not in favor of putting another food vendor in that area.
And I, I don't intend to argue with you on the topic. My only question is, we're oversaturated based on what? Our opinion?
Yes, in my opinion, yes. As you know, I live two blocks off the Douglas Road corridor. We're getting to the point where you can basically trip over food trucks on Douglas Road. It's not a big area, so yes.
There's three on Douglas, or two on Douglas, so it'd be two on Douglas.
Two on Douglas, and then another one right there on Montgomery, and then we're going to have the one where it's going to be multiple food trucks. I mean, I could walk to all of those.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think it's necessary. I think it's too much. That's my opinion.
It is your opinion, and you're, that's your right to have that opinion.
Yeah, if they all want to, if they all want to move to the one location, I mean, if he wants to go to a different level or that location that they're going to set up down the road where there's going to be multiple trucks, that's, that's fine, but, yeah, I, I agree.
I do frequent these.
Do I, what?
I do.
Oh, okay.
I do go to these. My only comment, and I made this at the last meeting, is that we ensure that they keep the, the area around in a, you know, appearance-wise, great, there, there was an area where we had flags and banners and all kinds of attractive nuisances, I would call them, that I don't think complies. I'd like to see us clean that up, but otherwise, and again, that's my opinion, you can have yours. Any thoughts?
In, in, it's not the job of the village board to determine if, if we have a taco truck in one location, it's not the, the purview of the village board to determine which are going to be successful and not, that's what the market dictates, so I have no issue with it.
And, and I absolutely, I understand that. I mean, we've had that conversation regarding different type of businesses in different areas. What I'm saying is we do have control over how many food trucks go in a particular area, and I'm talking that whole corridor. I think it's too many.
I, I'd have one clarifying question, Director Abt. Is Primos aware that they're moving just around the corner, and then that this license is going to go to another taco vendor, that when they left?
Yes.
They are, okay. I'm, I'm fine with it. I don't have an issue with it.
And if, I would say this, if they're all here, what really matters is to have the best tacos in that area, that's how you'll survive. So with that, is there a motion?
Is there a location of the west, maybe they can move, so we don't have them all in one spot? I'm, you know.
Well, the interesting thing is they haven't asked to go out to the west, and I wonder why. I, I wouldn't.
I don't know.
I wouldn't know, but it's something I would consider.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Debbie, call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
No.
Trustee Spurling.
No.
That carries three to two. Thank you. All right, moving on to ordinance, twenty thirty-eight, amending certain national codes and repealing and reestablishing a new section six of the Village of Montgomery Code of Ordinances. This is first reading, and we will also talk about the next two, which is section seven and section eight. I would like to invite our chief building officer, Mike Clupar.
Good evening, how are you?
President.
Thank you. In front of you tonight, there are three ordinance that incorporate the entire building code update. The last code update was completed in twenty nineteen, of which we adopted the twenty fifteen ICC building codes. The first ordinance is ordinance number twenty thirty-eight. This ordinance is entirely, an entirely revised chapter six of the Munich Code that incorporates all the twenty twenty-one versions of the international residential and commercial building codes. We decided to revise this entire chapter to make it more chronological order and more user-friendly. The second ordinance is number twenty thirty-nine, which is an update to the existing section in chapter seven. This ordinance adopts the twenty twenty version of the National Electric Code and relates specifically to electrical installations for all types of properties within the village. The third ordinance is number twenty forty, which is an update to the existing chapter eight. This ordinance adopts the twenty twenty-one International Fire Code and relates specifically to fire protection and fire alarm systems. I'm here tonight if you have any questions regarding the process or any content on the ordinance updates, so feel free, any questions that anybody may have.
Real quick, I know you and I talked about this, can you just touch on the ISO rating and how this helps or hurts?
Yes, the ISO rating, we get an ISO rating every five years. We are due mid-year next year, mid-year next year, I believe it's March of twenty-four, so currently we'd be on the twenty fifteen version, so that would mean we'd have to be at least to the twenty-one, because if you're not within five years, we get a deduction in your rating, which has a direct reflection on residential as well as commercial insurance premiums.
Perfect.
That's what that rating's for, so yeah, we, in order, we have to do this in order to move forward to be in compliance with our ISO rating for next year.
Perfect, and I know this was a big undertaking that took a while, so I do appreciate all the hard work that goes into that.
Thanks.
The question, the only question I have is, do we have any developments that are locked on old building codes? Will you be reviewing, using both codes for a while, or?
Yeah, it's a little bit of a transition period, once it formally, once we formally move forward with it, some of the miners, there's actually very few changes to it, so it's not that big a deal. We will go ahead and notify like our solar companies and things like that, that hey, we need to get updated to the updated version.
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, it'll be a little bit of a transition period, but as of right now, it's actually good timing. We have several, three or four larger projects that we're working on and moving forward. We go by submittal dates, so if they submitted two, three, four months ago, Cooper's Hawk, for example, is already kind of locked in.
Yep.
So yeah, this will be moving forward. It's getting to the end of the season, so it's good timing. Winter's moving forward, so spring, we should be able to hit the ground running with more stuff.
Perfect. Does this incorporate, you know, the state law that was passed last year?
Yes.
For, is it EV-ready homes, or is it for?
Yes, that's part of it. There are some, there is some verbiage in there about car charging stations, and I believe it's January first, actually, all residential has to have, right, correct EV-ready charging stations, and there are provisions in there for EV charging stations.
Perfect.
And that's just on residential properties is the new law for twenty twenty-four.
Awesome. Very cool.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks for the hard work. Any questions from the board? All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
These are both, the, all three of these are first readings, that's E, F, and G. Any objection to consent? Perfect. All right, last two. We have a, item H is a PSA with the E E I in the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four twenty, for design and construction engineering for the Fairfield Elevated Water Storage Tank Rehab. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brawley. So during preventative maintenance measures that we took in twenty twenty-two, we discovered that there were some defects in the paint integrity of the Fairfield tank, therefore we want to move forward with the repainting of that. So tonight, proposed is a PSA with Engineering Enterprises in the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars to complete this work. We would propose more than likely going out to bid sometime late this year, and then most likely moving forward, depending on feedback from the contractors, moving forward in the spring and summertime period for that project, so if there's any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
I have.
Go ahead.
As I look at this, explain this process to me, because I'm, I'm looking at a cost of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars for the engineering that doesn't include any of the, the blasting or the repainting. That seems really expensive to me.
So there's a lot of design work that has to go into this when it comes to the process of actually stripping the tank down and capturing all those materials to making sure that we don't have issues with that, and then also the coordinated effort during the course of construction for E E I to be onsite to make sure and coordinating with the contractor that they're following all of those provisions and those requirements within the bid.
Yeah, almost a hundred thousand of that is five hundred hours of somebody onsite the whole time they're working in our facility.
Are, are we doing just the outside? We're not doing anything on the inside? We're doing the inside as well?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so it would be a full blast on the outside, full blast on the interior wet section, and most likely just a spot blast and paint on the interior dry section.
Okay, that makes more sense than.
So it, it'll take, I think we're estimating it's going to take sixteen to twenty weeks to do the work.
Oh, my gosh.
My other question then is, okay, while that is down, are we, we, we have the capacity and the exchangeability to move water around as we need it?
That's correct.
We won't have any service issues with the residents over there?
No, we don't anticipate anything, obviously, but we always work hard to make sure that we minimize any water quality issues. You know, keep in mind, we take preventive measures typically every seven to eight years with a cleaning process in which we take the towers out of service to be able to do that, and we transfer water from different, our different zones with very minimal to no issues.
I know these questions are going to come up, so I'm going to ask them now. What measures are we taking to prevent the blasting debris, the, the sandblasting and the paint and stuff from getting on neighbors' properties and vehicles and into their homes and their air and all of that?
During the blasting, it'll have a full containment, like a, it'll look like a sheet, basically, that they're going to put up around the tower to make sure that nothing gets up, versus when we did the cleaning in the past, that is not typically what you would do when you do cleaning, but we would do that in this case with the full blast. And just to add to your question about the operations thing is, we will put something in there that basically specifies the amount of time the tower's allowed to be down, so once you take the tower out of service, the contractor has X weeks to get everything done and get it back in service to reduce that amount of time that the tower's offline.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
And to clarify, this is a tower that'll be in use after we switch to Lake Michigan water, all of these, because that'll be a question that'll come up from residents, is why are we spending this kind of money to rehab something that's going to be gone? It will not be gone, it'll be in use.
Correct, so all of our, the village's water storage tanks will stay in service even after the transition to Lake Michigan, as well as likely two additional storage tanks that will be put at our receiving stations.
I have a question for you, Director Wolf. You had mentioned that this was done just a short time ago, and there was some kind of defect in the, in the paint, the painting?
Correct, the, the, the paint is failing on the tank, which is probably right around its lifespan.
Okay.
So it's not necessarily an unexpected repainting. We're looking at also, so we put together a preventative maintenance, or Engineering Enterprises assists us with putting together a preventative maintenance program, so we have all these years laid out for maintenance as far as just pressure washing, cleaning, exterior, interior, but then also repainting, so to put it in perspective, the Ogden Hill Tower, I believe, was allocated in the budget for two, in two years to be repainted as well, that kind of helps put it into perspective with this tank and when it was put up.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I was under the impression that it had somehow failed before, before the, the end of the useful life. Just based on your initial comments, that's what I was thinking, that something had happened and, but you're saying this is a normal lifecycle for it.
That's the process of doing the preventive maintenance is to check the integrity of the paint. We also do that periodically when we don't necessarily do the cleanings as well. We perform that usually typically now with a drone, where we're able to go up and look at the, the integrity of the paint to make sure that it's matching up. And all of our different tanks in different areas have, you know, different complexities to them, so for example, there's a lot of aggregate farm fields that are surrounding the Foxmore and Fairfield area that could be a contributing factor to why that paint deteriorated quicker, so those are all things that we take into account when we look at this.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Any other questions? Your motion?
So moved.
All right, call the roll. That was Marisak and Youngerman, I got their names right tonight, which is nice.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Maybe when that project is all complete, we could have a coffee, you know, with the board out there. I did that maybe eight years ago. I told my daughter, and she was so excited to go there, she went and got her floaties on. She thought we were going swimming in the water tank.
Aww.
So you, you have to be clear. Anyway, all right, moving on to item I this evening is approval of contract with Trane in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, five twenty-three for the Trane Tracer Building Automation System upgrade. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brawley. So through the last few years, we have been slowly replacing components with the, that control the HVAC system here at Village Hall, so the reason, primary reason tonight for moving forward with the remainder of the upgrades is solely that we identified the fact that costs are going up. The V A V controllers that we're replacing in this upgrade are continuing to fail, and therefore we wanted to expedite the process and ultimately save money. The original plan was to spread this out over several years, but again, in the budgeting process last year, we identified that with the increase in costs, we would be in a better position to move forward and complete the upgrades. It also will reduce the ability for our staff to have to monitor the older equipment as well as the, the new upgraded equipment that we've pre-existing put in, which will help alleviate staff time and struggles with identifying and troubleshooting when there's issues, so. The one thing to note is that this purchase tonight is being proposed as through the Omnia Partners membership that the village has. This is a purchasing cooperative that allows us basically to fulfill our obligations with the state when it comes to competitively bidding and moving forward with this project, so. Any questions from the board? I am happy to answer them.
Thanks, sir. Questions?
This is going to be a more consistent temperature in this room and throughout the Village Hall?
So this room's actually already been replaced, but it does affect with the older V A V controllers, it can affect the whole system, the system as a whole, so again, wanting to get everything on the same platform will help us with issues because we, what happens is you get a lot of compensation in different areas when one of these controllers fails, so it can cause some uncomfortability sometimes in certain situations and areas.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Right.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling. Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
That carries five to zero. Thank you. All right. We don't have anything for discussion? Anything new or unfinished? Doug? I can't think of anything.
Halloween safety event will be coming up, the PD.
I thought you were shaking your head because nobody mentioned the Public Works event this weekend. Very well attended, smiles on everybody's faces. It was awesome.
I'm not talking about it. I spilled my coffee on the new concrete floor twice.
Solid. And Sean Murphy has not forgiven me.
No, I bet.
One thing to update is the Orchard Road and Route 30 project. I spoke to the engineer today on the project. So, there are digital signs up. They're going to be starting the signal work this week. Obviously, today, they didn't start because of the rain, but they're anticipating starting tomorrow. Currently, they're waiting on some of the controller components. So, the mast arms are all in. So, they've pushing the contractor to move forward with erecting the mast arms, starting to pull the wire. If they are not anticipating the controller units to come in within, I believe you told me, the next week or two, they're going to force the contractor to move forward with a second temporary control box to upfit the new signals until the permanent unit can come in or, or items for that can come in. So, the temporary signals will be left up through the duration until the final control box and control, traffic control signal equipment is completed. So, that way, there's no disruption when they have to go back and do that swapover. So, that is the update on that. I know it's been a very painful process. Unfortunately, the village is really very hands-off on this. It's not our project. But did get some reassurance today from them that they are starting to push the contractor to, to get this work done.
When did you say that signal work is going to start?
This week, tomorrow.
The, the boards say today.
Yeah.
They prep people that it was going to start. So, I met with the Kane County Chair a couple of weeks ago, talked about this. I said, I know it's your project. It's not my project, but everybody in my town thinks it's my project. So, what is going on?
Yeah.
We did talk about the, the final lift of the pavement that's down that is not excellent.
No.
My opinion. I shouldn't say that, but it is not. So, at any rate, thus the reason why we continue to lobby for full widening of that intersection with I-DOT, which I will do again on Wednesday when I'm in Chicago. Thank you. Real quick, I know you guys saw in the note that came from Jeff, staff had researched the basins on the ownership. I think he's, staff has kind of delineated which ones we own, which ones we don't own. I think other than providing that information, unless there's clear direction from the board to go further, I think status quo wins out. Nobody's asking for us to go and take ownership of all the other basins unless the board feels otherwise. I don't think staff is going to spend any more time on this.
Well, the, when Kyle Householder was here, he asked for the ownership of the basins in Blackberry Crossing West to be moved to.
And if there's an HOA that wants to transfer ownership, we're more than willing to take it. But it could be an edgy conversation to start going to homeowners, asking if we can take ownership of their basin. Status quo is fine, but yes, if an HOA comes to us, we would be more than willing to accept them like we did for many of the others. Perfect. All right. Future meetings, you can see, two weeks from today, we do have intergov at 6:30. Is that 6:30 or is it going to be earlier? 6 o'clock, please. We'll send out a reminder, and then the village board meeting here at 7. Motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
And we're adjourned. Thanks.